All right, I'm calling this meeting to order, joint meeting of the DPW subcommittee and town council. Tuesday, October eleventh, six thirty PM in the Veterans Room. Call to order, roll call, Council Marquinhos here, Council Steve's.
President.
Steve Lozo.
Yep.
And Kevin Splain is here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider an approved joint DPW town council meeting minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Everybody have a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Any changes?
No.
Corruptions? I think I spelled Joe's name wrong, but.
Minor.
I'll correct it, yeah. Uh, no, um, no, it's okay. Nothing, all right, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, citizens forum, any citizens have anything they'd like to say? For tonight's meeting? Nothing, all right. Then we'll move on. Agenda item number five, discuss the town manager's appointment of Benjamin Doros as maintenance man, equipment operator for the town of Southridge DPW, pending the successful completion of pre-employment physical and background screening.
Motion.
Second.
Entertainer motion, thank you. Uh, town manager's not here tonight. So, I guess, Phil, did you wanna speak on this?
Come here, I was just gonna let you inform you that he has a CDL Class C, he has a Porsche two A, one C. And he also, um, has some experience, he he worked for the town of Birmill for a while, so he has some experience with the DPW and everything, so I believe it'd be a great fit.
All right. And Kevin?
Mister Chair, this gentleman's been working for me during the summer this year, and he's highly qualified for this position, he meets all our minimum requirements and then some. I highly recommend him for this position.
Okay. Anybody else? Mister Doris, did you wanna say anything?
Appreciate the offer.
All right.
Highly recommended.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, all right, if there's nothing else, all those in favor? Congratulations, welcome aboard. Agenda item number six, discuss the purchase of an HP Design Jet T two six zero zero drive from CW, CDW dash G for fourteen thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents from the state bid list. Contract number ITC seven three with funds from DPW, four thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents from Small Capital. Account number zero zero one four nine nine five eight three zero zero zero, water, five thousand for maintenance and operating. Account number six one zero four five zero five two zero one zero zero, and sewer, five thousand for maintenance and operating. Account number six zero zero four four zero five two zero one zero zero. Entertain a motion of recommendation.
Motion, second.
Okay, Phil, would you like to talk to this?
Um, pretty much with the one that we have right now, it's a three-piece system, uh, the the major computer board, I guess, went on it, it kind of tried itself. Um, did some research about it, Matt did before he left, uh, his position, and found that we couldn't find parts and pieces for it. So, we did some searching around, found out that, uh, Sturbridge bought this, this one here, that, uh, HP Design Jet. And they love it, it comes as a small little system, it's not a three-part system anymore, it does as much as everything else. And right now, as it stands, we can't print any blueprints, can't copy any blueprints, can't do anything. So if any, you know, town resident came down, they can't even get any copy of their blueprints right now, so. Um, I. We do use it, and we use it quite often, and not just our department, I mean sewer, water, even, even here over here at the town hall, they use it as well for any of the designs that they need, so. It's, I guess they did their due diligence and did their research and found that the one that they're looking forward is like one of the higher quality ones. That's pretty much all I have to say about that.
All right, any questions? Any questions?
I just wanna, I just wanna say it's a no-brainer, and we need it.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanna say, I did research on this, and the price is very good for what they're purchasing, the town does need it, it is used a lot, and, uh, I highly recommend it, I mean, we do use it a lot, in multiple departments in this town.
You have any?
I really, I mean, I'd advocate it doing it back at the town council meeting, so.
I do.
Exactly, it's, it's needed.
I did go to the, over there to take a look at it, you did show it to me, I can see what you're talking about, the situation there. Uh, my only question was, you, you couldn't buy just a computer for that system that you have now, so it has to be one.
I guess it's outdated, and they highly, I mean, when they did some research on it, suggested they get a whole new system, it would be a lot cheaper in the long run.
All right.
Definitely.
Okay.
Was it an issue that the system had just crashed on its own for age?
Pretty much crashed on its own for age, I mean, it is a very outdated system.
Gangnam Park.
I mean, you had three different sections, with a new one now, you can just do one thing out of it all, and it just does it all.
And you think the HP is better than the Epson?
That's what they, they researched it all, um, I know, like I said, the town of Sturbridge, they, they did a lot of research on it too, and they, they went with that one, and, and they love it right now.
Okay.
It's the best thing that ever happened to them, they had the same system that we had prior, so.
I'm, I'm just curious to Mister Jackson, um, I remember you were raising a show of having Mister Jackson come and comment on this.
When he was there Friday, he did have to suggest getting a whole new system.
Mister, and Mister Jackson's only working one, one day a week, so.
As of right now, yes.
Uh.
Soon as he's done with his other position, then he'll be there a little bit more frequently.
All right, and he did take a look at it, and he thought this was a good one as well?
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, I guess that's it then, uh, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, agenda item number seven, discuss the town manager's appointment of VHB and Ty and Bond as interim engineers for on-call services, entertain a motion to recommend a town council for confirmation or rise.
Motion, second. He's good.
Uh, did you want to talk to this one, Phil, or?
I talked with the town manager about it briefly before I came here tonight, to kind of figure, see what was going on, and it's pretty much is, what he was saying is, have them as an all-call service. So that when we do need an engineer, until we do fill our engineering position, that we have someone that we can rely on and do, I guess, him and Matt went through a lot, and tried to figure out who the best two would be to, to do it, and they came down with those two companies. They said that if you need any more, I can give them a call, and I get some more information if, if needed.
Okay, any questions, Kevin?
Mister Chair, make a motion that we postpone the next two agenda items between Ty and Bond and VHB, until the town manager's here to answer legal questions as far as appointing these two people.
I'll second that.
For our engineers.
So you want.
Reason being is, is the, these two people we've used in the past, we have them on current jobs in this town, and we're asking them to be our engineers on jobs that we're paying them to be oversight people, and now they're gonna be our engineers on the same job. I think there might be a conflict there, and I'd like to know if there is, and how we go about doing it. We have West Street project going on with Ty and Bond, I believe is our oversight committee. We've had questions about Ty and Bond's oversight on South Street, we had VHB on Main Street as our oversight, and we had problems there with questions. And now we're asking them to be our engineers for the town, and town manager's not here to answer questions, so I ask you postpone to our next meeting, please.
Okay. All right, a motion to postpone by Kevin Splain, seconded by Lozo, um, did you have anything you wanted to say to this?
Well, I was gonna, I was actually gonna ask Phil, um, if, uh, if you have any, any concerns, or, or, or any, anything that you expected these people to be doing that, um, that we wouldn't be, that we normally wouldn't be doing in-house. I mean, I know we don't have an engineer in that's the whole point of doing this, but.
It, pretty much, I mean, the, the things that would be asking to do is, is to be more of the engineer oversight of the whole projects that are going on, that could need any, like, we, you know, Ellis Rover, if it ever does happen, you know, mechanic street and that type of, in North Street, if we have any engineer issues.
Right. Did you grab something you wanted to say about that?
Yeah, I would say that, especially with regards to, you've got the tip project in the.
I'm having it, I'm just kidding.
You have, you have the, the tip project for the Hularishal Way, and Greg Russell of VHB has been in constant communication with the town about, uh, the, the design, you know, the project updates, et cetera. They've been great to work with, I imagine as it gets closer, uh, we would need more assistance from them, um, and Ty and Bond, you know, that, uh, working closely with them, obviously now with West Street, et cetera. Um, it's, it, it seems like a wonderful service to be able to have both of them. With, uh, you know, consideration to, uh, pay previous experiences, they are already entrenched in these other projects.
And, and that is true, and I can understand what Kevin is saying. Um, I, I, ideally, I would, I would assume that we'd have the ones that, that VHB is, have, is currently working on, would be overseen by Ty and Bond and vice versa. But then again, if we're having issues with both of them on projects, um, I mean, I know, I know that, uh, the manager mentioned, I think it was a couple of days ago, um, I don't remember, he, I think he said it at the meeting, or, anyway, he did bring it up at some point about the idea, that's why he wanted both of them on. So that can, one can like oversee, make sure that they're not, not overseeing each other's own projects, essentially. Um, and I think he did mention the, that there, there are other engineering firms out there as well, so.
Okay, yeah, I did talk to the town manager, and he said there is, he might come forward with another engineering firm that works a lot with Mister Piapi. So I wouldn't mind hearing about this third option before we go through, forward with this. Is there, is it necessary, I mean, could we postpone this, would it hurt anything if we postponed?
Yeah, he, he said if he wanted to postpone, he had no problem issues with that.
Right, okay.
I mean, he did say he was trying to reach out to the, I can't remember the name of, of that at one either, but he did say he was gonna try to reach out to him and get some answers, so.
Yeah, I don't remember either. Okay. All right, well, I'm okay with postponing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if they, I don't know if he's talked to McClure or the others that are, or whatever, so.
Counselor?
I'm not sure if you wanna postpone something like this while we're waiting for a DPW director to come in here, I understand what the town manager's talking about, we can discuss that at the town council meeting. But you're waiting another three, three weeks, four weeks, before we have another town council meeting to bring an engineer back on, I understand the conflict of interest, but, you know, this is, this is a recommending board at this point in time, that the town council asks a lot of the hard questions, maybe Kevin has some questions that he has not asked yet, bring it to you, and then TM can do it, and we can postpone it then. I wouldn't shut it off right now.
Well, what do you guys think? I've seen other committees postpone, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think he was right, that we could, we could just send it up and then, and actually debate there. If the man, the manager's gonna be there anyway, most likely, usually is, so.
Kevin, did you wanna say something?
Don't you guys? I can go ahead.
I stand by my, my postponement, and I don't see why we can't schedule another meeting next week, the week after, before town council meeting, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, no matter what, if it comes here, whether we vote yea or nay, it go, it's still gonna be another two weeks or, or three weeks before it goes upstairs, we can meet before then. Get the questions answered through the TM before we send it upstairs, I mean.
Mm-hmm. Either way, it's fine, I mean. I mean, if we wanna do another meeting, you wanna do it next today?
I mean, I, I'd still like to hear this, this quote-unquote third engineering firm that he, he, he's been talking to, and find out if there is a conflict, if there is not a conflict.
Yeah. Yeah, me too.
I mean, we've had problems with VHB, you know, Ty and Bond, we've had a couple of problems, and now he's recommending both of them. And then, now we're hearing as a third person, I said we postpone it, and maybe schedule a meeting for next week, or a week after, before a town council meeting, and, you know, the town manager can hopefully show up and answer some questions that we have.
So I believe that next town council meeting is Monday night, yeah?
Yeah, Monday, and then you won't, that's what I was looking right now, your next meeting won't be until the seventh of November.
Is it? Wednesday.
November, yeah.
You have a town council meeting Monday night, seventeen, so you're, you're waiting another three weeks.
Monday night, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, the town council can turn around and postpone, and say, come back to us, set up another DPW meeting from there, if he wants to add another third party in, and he should go through the DPW, he shouldn't go through the town council straight, straight away for a third party.
Right, right.
But the two that he's already brought, we've always had problems out of every single, everybody's gotta, nevermind, I won't.
I'm just worried about the conflict, that's all.
I, I agree with you there.
Absolutely, well, when you bring two of these on, so Ty is not gonna oversee its own work. So, that's why I'm saying that, that that's why he probably bought it too, and there's a third party. Just to cover basis until we get a DPW director and engineer actually on board, I, I just caution, I, he actually said he doesn't mind postponing this thing?
He pretty much said that if they wanna talk to me about it, then they have to wait until they can talk to me about it. You know, it's one of those, I mean, should they get him in sooner than later? Yes. Because they know we wanna move on with some of the stuff, and we don't have any engineers oversee anything at the moment.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I.
Okay.
Conflict of interest, I mean, and to, to speak on Dave's behalf of things to every, every engineer, no matter who you have, you're gonna have issues with, no matter who it is, but.
Well, we could postpone until, we could have a meeting Monday night before the town council meeting if we want, and just have.
This is true, we could do that.
One agenda item.
At like six thirty, six?
Yeah, six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
If you want to do that, we can do that.
All right, I, I think I, I would rather that.
That's fine, as long as it goes up, just a bit, maybe they ask some of the questions.
Kevin, we could also, we could also, we could also just send it up without recommendation.
Uh, let's postpone it.
That, that's my motion.
Can, can I, can I just throw something else out there?
Yep.
Maybe Kevin, with the, some of the questions he may have, he can have those answers before you even set up, well, that's why I'm saying not postpone it.
Hopefully. Right.
You guys do what you need to do, but, uh, I was saying, I, I, I don't know if I would, but I have no problem, you wanna do it at six o'clock, on one agenda item, that's your call.
Uh, I do like that, but I have a question though, Dave, say if we, I don't know who can answer that, between you, Dave. If we postpone this, and we do a meeting at six o'clock on Monday, how, is it still able to get on Monday nights?
It'll be on Monday night's agenda.
We'll start on the agenda.
You can still do it with, and go what we say at six, you know, five o'clock.
Yeah, it'll be on the agenda.
You could also, as a citizen member, walk up there on the agenda item and speak on that.
Yeah.
All right, I'd rather meet with the TM, say if we do it six o'clock, DPW, and then still, still send it upstairs at the same time, an hour later.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll still be on the agenda.
Yeah, it's gonna be on the, we're gonna put that on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
All right, that's all, okay.
Let's do it that way, 'cause, that's my motion.
So we're postponing it till Monday, six o'clock?
Right.
All right? All right?
So that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Yep. All right, all those in favor? So I will get together with Hannah and schedule a meeting for Monday.
Yeah.
That's all right, thank you.
Yeah, she'll do that before noon tomorrow.
All right. Okay. Agenda item number E, discussion of trench bylaw regulation change. So I made some copies of some things I think you should look at. I brought my conditions. I brought some recommendations, if you wanna take a look at them, what I thought we might wanna do, we can take off, whatever you don't wanna put on there, we'll take it off. Whatever, you know, I'd like to hear what you have to say about it.
Yeah, I took a whole bunch of those in my. Forgot to bring them last time, but I have, have it back down.
So I mean, the first thing that I thought we should do is, is make a recommendation, how we go with a long-form trench permit, rather than that short thing that they have.
I'm a catch recommendation.
Well, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just, we won't, we won't vote on each item right now, we'll just say what this is, what we wanna do, we'll discuss it.
Yeah. Yep.
Whatever we decide to do, we're gonna end up discussing it with a, a new DPW director.
Right.
Right.
In the end, anyway, so that would be my first recommendation here, that we do a long-form application, including a full disclaimer. Most of the towns that I've looked at around the area, they all do a full disclaimer. Um, they have a long, they have a long trench permit that has the name of the applicant.
I'm a good one, it's common. Right, we do work in town, in town here already. Yeah.
Address, name of excavator. Uh, and so forth. I put on there a permit, a fee of twenty-five dollars, I don't know if that's what we wanna do, but that's, I just put that on there for now, you can always take that off.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, conditions and restrictions for street openings. I, reading over the conditions and restrictions, number one, the committee will be, uh, required to carry regular public liability and property damage liability insurance for limit of not less than fifty thousand for each accident, total limit of one hundred thousand. I was looking at the, uh, everybody else, most of the other communities, and also the states, the states recommendation, they were all one hundred thousand and three hundred thousand.
Yep. Yeah.
So that's what I was looking at, I thought that that was probably a good idea. Uh, Jackie's law even, or, uh, Mass General Law eighty-two A has one hundred thousand per person and three hundred thousand per claim. So I would imagine if it's state law, most contractors will go with hundred thousand, so, um, do you think that would be a good change, would we all be agreeing with that one?
I, I agree with that, not, I agree with that.
All right. Some communities such as Charlton, and they include specific language on workers' comp, I'm not saying we have to do that. We have it in our, uh, guide here, that it just basically says, you shall have workers' comp, very, I can't imagine somebody would carry less than that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they also, uh, Charlton has a, a blasting insurance that goes up to, up to a million dollars, I'm not sure it's, there's much blasting going on in Southridge, but that's what they do in Charlton. So, we'll just leave it then as a simple change, hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, or?
The only thing me personally, that twenty-five dollar fee, I think we should waive that.
Yeah.
Because the, the contractors is gonna pass it on to the homeowner anyways, we don't wanna penalize or, or charge our town resident.
Pass it up to the owner. Pass it up to the homeowner.
Okay. Well, that's, that's number two on their conditions, the town's conditions, application for all work shall be filled, file the minimum of seventy, seventy-two hours, three days prior to the expected start. Most of the other communities that I looked at, when they have wording like that, application, they also include a fee in there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, some of them were as high as two hundred dollars. Uh, it seemed to me about a halfway point would be about twenty-five bucks. I don't have a problem with, uh, waiving that, I will say that when I do home, when I do anything around my home, I have to pay for a permit fee.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't understand why somebody's doing the road, and I know it's, it's passed on by the contractor, I'm sure he does.
That's, that's true about home, homeowner for permits anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to pay a fee.
They didn't move, the contractor just gave, put it on the, put it on the bill.
Right, they put it on the bill, and when it comes to my house, when it's all done, the inspector has to come to my house, it's already been paid for.
Yeah. Yeah.
So go ahead, nothing.
I have no problem if you wanna add that application fee, like I said, it just, it's gonna go back on to the homeowner themselves. My biggest thing with this whole process is, it's not an application fee, my biggest thing is a fining fee to the contractor, and it's not.
Well, we'll get to that.
Yeah, well, we'll get to that.
We're gonna get to that, yeah.
It's not in here that I can see, well, I didn't see the backside, sorry, that's my biggest thing, is that.
Yeah, well, yeah, it is.
I mean. Well, to Kevin's point, I mean, my question is, um, if we're having an application fee for any kind of application, not just this, what is it that, that, the town actually does for the application fee?
So my thing is, is I understand what, what Mike's.
No, well, 'cause we're doing that as part, as part of the process anyway.
Yeah.
Put some of this other stuff in.
No, okay.
I kinda understand that the application fee of twenty-five dollars, I mean, we do have town employees that are gonna go out and inspect this work, not once, not twice, maybe three times, four times. I understand we should recuperate some of our money for that.
That's, that's not right.
So I can, I can kinda see it that way, it just, the downfall part is, it's gonna go back on the, the town resident.
Mm-hmm.
It falls on the, but like I said, my biggest thing is, I didn't see it back here, is the penalties.
Okay. Uh, Mister Shudner?
I really think you should consider the fees. And, and yes, it's gonna be passed on to the homeowner when you're digging a water line, going to their home and all that. A lot of communities in the, charge an application fee, like you say, twenty-five dollars up to two hundred dollars, and a good portion of the utility companies charge utility, like you take Everett Street. Everett Street's not being paid for by a homeowner, and that's three, four hundred feet, five hundred feet long, and they pay by the, the length of the job. So, those people, you're not gonna pull a permit for ninety-eight Everett Street, and ninety-nine Everett Street, and ninety-six Everett Street, you're gonna be pulling a permit for Everett Street for the entire length, and the community should charge a fee to that contractor to cover the cost of what is being inspected, to make sure that the job, that's what a fee's for, the fee is to recover the cost.
That makes sense.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I think, per state law, uh, like a gas company, according to what I'm reading, they're exempt.
They're a town.
They don't have to pay the fee, so they're the only ones we would be charging, some of the, the driveway.
Right.
I think we're gonna look at that again, because I, I saw other towns that said gas, like specifically the gas companies paid a fee for.
To the state, yeah.
Through the town, in their town, and they pay a fee to the state when they open up a state road, and they have to follow the regulations of the community, and they have to follow the regulation of the state. So when you get something like Everett Street, and it's, and the entire length of Everett Street, it's gonna be fall on the company.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, just remember, there's some state laws out there that town ordinance is supersede what the state law does, the state law is the guidance.
Okay.
So, I mean, according to the way this is, lies, is raised here, it says, if, they have these gas company or any corporation that meets these certain provisions, which has already paid a fee to attain a permit, to attain a permit. So, to, to excavate a public way, presumably, that would mean, eh, they already have paid a fee to the town.
Okay.
Not necessarily to the state, and why would, why would this, why would the state charge a fee to open a public way in the town?
I'm just going by what. I'm just going by what.
Unless, unless it's a state road.
What Matt said, Matt said they don't have to, uh, we were complaining about National Grid.
Well, that's where the problem came in, because Heather said it, then Matt said it, but then I said that's not right, because it's not, even though it's quote-unquote National Grid, it's not National Grid.
Yeah.
He said you don't have to pay a fee, right.
It's NUCO who's subbed out for National Grid, they should still pay, because
Right, I know.
the things that not, that NUCO, who works for National Grid, are getting away with in this town is horrendous.
It is, it is, so how do you?
I agree.
They don't have guys that are licensed.
But that's a different issue now, that's the next issue we're gonna get.
That's what we need to address now.
Corey, Corey, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just had to suggest that you look into that, because I used to have to maintain fees for each town that I worked in, usually it was a monthly fee, and the company would have to write a check to the town for the road opening permit.
Okay.
And, and I was working for the gas company, the state roads, the, the gas company would issue the permit, uh, for us, through the state.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it was in the, the subcontractor's name, or it was under EverSource Gas with RHY as a subcontract, per se.
Okay.
So, they did pay a fee, and in most towns that I worked with, every month I'd have to maintain that fee if the job was ongoing, uh, over a month, so, I'm suggesting we can do that.
All right. We will look, I will look further into that, I, I was under the, the understanding that they didn't, they didn't have to pay a fee, but I'll look further into that.
We should ask, probably ask Karen about that.
So then the next part, inspections, and I would add that to condition number two as well.
Yeah.
I cleaned this from other towns. What kind of inspections would go on, um, after the excavation and installation of the proposed utility, during compaction of backfill and installation of surface travel, after installation of the temporary patch, after installation of the final patch, prior to the release of the bond, at any specific times deemed necessary by the superintendent, who is or her designated. I don't see this, anything like this in our conditions about inspections.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that.
I also came up with a, maybe a job description of what our inspector would be, I have not talked to the town manager about this.
I'm gonna say something.
Put this, I have not, I, I, I take it back, I did talk to the town manager about it, he would like, uh, if there's a new DPW director for him to have some input in this, I don't have any problem with that as well. But if we're going to do inspections, we're gonna need an inspector, so that's why I did this. Go ahead, Steve.
Um, I agree with this a hundred percent, we, uh, I got a call from a homeowner. Just recently on Charlton Street, there was a company from out of town who dug a superline, and I went there myself, and Kevin showed up, I called Kevin. We went up there, and the road was not cold patched, they're supposed to cold patch it right away after, or plate it, with steel plate.
Right.
There was motorcycles going by, and gravel rocks about this big, all over the road, which is very dangerous. So, we cleaned up the rocks, and I took his cones, the guy's cones, and put them across the road myself, and I don't know who the contractor is, 'cause it was a rented machine, there was no name on it.
Yeah.
It was Friday, the town, and I don't know who inspected it, like I said, we needed to inspect it, all weekend it was like that, I notified the police department, they went all day, I don't know if they ever got anybody over there for the weekend, but it was a mess.
So what I did is, I put together this, oh, I'm sorry, you lost, you lost, huh?
Yeah, I'm all set, thank you.
So I put together this job description, construction inspector, I took this from different, um, job sites, such as Indeed, other communities that are looking for someone to do this type of work, and I put it together based on that. I, I combined it with what we had for the town engineering assistant, I took out some of the, well, the requirements that they be an engineer, I took out some of the things about, um, stormwater, 'cause I don't think that's what we're looking for, I, I know we need somebody to look at stormwater, if you want to train somebody on that, that would be okay. The only thing I did leave in there is, if they have an associate's degree, then that would be great, or a bachelor's degree or higher. I don't see why we wouldn't hire somebody like that, if they have construction background as well, but the minimum requirements, I didn't, I did not have anything in there about having a associate's, bachelor's, or engineering degree whatsoever. So I just put this together for us to look at, if we do, I had a, you know, a subsequent meeting, if we can talk about this inspection, because if we want to have inspections, we're gonna have to have an inspector, so that's why I put this together.
Right. I agree with that.
What do you think? What do you think? What's up, Kevin?
We cut it off track in my opinion, from this, yeah, to this, both of them are good. So, but, I agree, I, I agree with this, but if we go back to the first page you put out for the conditions and restrictions.
Well, no, I, I. Right.
Can I say, let's finish this backside of this page before we go here?
No problem, but the reason I put this first is because a penalty would be conditioned on our inspections, so if you want.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, all right, I understand that, okay.
If you wanna put them out of order, that's fine.
No, no, I, now I understand.
Okay.
I agree with what you're doing here, this is long overdue, and I'm gonna say it. Waiting to fill this position right here is the most asinine thing this town manager's doing right now.
No, 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 we won't say that, we'll just say we want, we wanna try and encourage him to do this, okay, how's that?
To put it on wait and wait and wait, I don't agree with it.
All right.
We need it now with the millions of dollars worth of construction going on, we need this position filled now and not wait.
Okay.
DPW director could be six, seven months down the road.
I think the town manager, he has, he is open to doing this, he did say it at one of our last meetings, that he is open to changing the, the, uh, job description, so that's what I wanna work on, getting him to just like, okay, have his input on this. I don't wanna beat him up over it, let's get your input, let's get the, uh, DPW director in.
I agree, let's move forward.
Let's move forward, yeah.
Yeah. But as far as your, your penalties.
All right, now we're at the penalties, let's go to that, and I would add that to, I was looking, I read this whole thing, and it's not a bad document that we have here.
It's not, it just needs modification.
Number thirteen, I would add it to number thirteen, failure to obtain street opening permit, and what they say is if you don't take your permit, we can yank your license. If you don't comply with these conditions, we can yank your license.
Yep.
But that doesn't have any teeth to it, in my opinion.
Well.
Well, first of all, it's a shall, I bet.
Yanking, yanking somebody's license is the hardest thing you can do.
Yeah.
But, and what Steve said earlier was that Charlton Street one that we also saw, I mean, I think even Chairman Daniels saw it, is here it says two hundred dollars per day.
I, I took that from another town.
No, and I agree with that, but my thing is, is, is just say, like, for that one case that we had, two hundred dollars per day, that was on a Saturday. We couldn't get ahold of the company because DPW's closed, there's no way to get in touch with the contractor. So we sent DPW guys out, time and a half, minimum, whatever their contract is, two, three hours. So the town spent monies to send highway out. Even though it's two hundred dollars per day, if we gotta, if, what I'm saying is, if the town has to do something to remedy that problem, we should be able to backcharge the contractor for that.
I agree with that.
You know, say if on that Saturday or Sunday, the highway department had to come in and put coal patch down, and it was the labor rate for a couple of guys plus materials, I believe the town should be able to recuperate.
I agree.
What it came out of taxpayers' money, to go after the contractor, on top of his fine, is fine.
All right.
I agree.
But I do agree with, you go after somebody's license, that's the hardest thing you can do, but.
Yeah, it is. I've never seen it happen either, I haven't.
I, I think we'd also make it a lot easier if, I mean, we've seen this, the major projects they have proposed, who's doing the work.
I've heard it once.
But these smaller projects, if there, if there's a road, if anywhere they need a road opening permit, they really should be required to post a name of the contractor on the site, so we can see who to reach.
Usually they have their own equipment, they take the name out.
Somebody like in this case, and we have no idea who these people are.
It was a rental, it was a rental.
Yeah, but that's beside the point, equipment is a, they can rent whatever they want, I don't care what equipment.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say the people who are responsible for it should be required to post their names and contact while they're doing the work.
Well, they're supposed to, they're supposed to have a building permit somewhere near on a tree.
If they don't, how will they know? Exactly.
But I didn't see one.
It is in your, that's supposed to.
In that case, if they're not posted, you see a vehicle.
It's in that, it's in our original.
The problem is, we just don't have anybody overs, overseeing this, so that's what we need.
Don't enforce it, yeah, there's no oversight for it. The other problem that we need to think about, and.
I, I got you, go ahead, go ahead.
It's something that just happened recently in the past few years, I wanna say. The, the problem is, and, and I'm gonna use that Charlton Street one, 'cause we all saw what happened there, is that job was done on a Friday. And, the bad part is, is town hall closes at noon time on Fridays, so doesn't, DPW closes at noon time on Fridays. There's no inspections after noon time on Friday. Contractors work past noon time on Fridays. That's where we kinda what happens at that point, I guess is what my question is.
Well, I went, when I took a little tour of the DPW barn, uh, that, that was out a Friday afternoon, and they were open, people were working.
So, if I may, Phil, do you know, oh, they left. From a certain time from, and I'm just gonna throw numbers out there, just for numbers, from like, say, June fifteenth until October fifteenth, they work four ten hour days, Monday through Thursday, and then they work a half a day on Friday, and then they're done. After that, October fifteenth day, they go back to five, eight hour days. So that's what happens in the summertime, which is the construction period. They work those longer days during the week, the beginning half of the week, and they get out at noon time on Fridays. Or whatever it might be, they have Fridays off, so there's nobody there to do the inspections on that Friday during that, that, that short, whatever it is, eight weeks, ten week timeframe, so we gotta think about that, because then there's nobody here to actually inspect the trenches.
So I'm seeing two things, you know, we wanna take a look at adding a cost for the repair, the DPW has to do it, and also took a, take a look at DPW hours in the summertime.
Right, I mean, if, if, the case is, is if, if DPW, if nobody is in the DPW on a Friday, all day Friday, or afternoon time on Fridays, or whatever, and you shouldn't be able to open a road, or, or, if you need the emergency inspection, somebody's gotta pay for that, and have a guy stay. I mean, I don't think it should go back on the taxpayer, if they got time and a half, or.
I agree, I agree. So maybe, maybe then that would be something we condition the, the permit fees on, if they're going, if they plan on doing inspections after hours, then they have to pay.
You gotta pay.
That's true.
I mean, eh, taxpayers gotta pay for the guy for hi- his time to be there from the, the highway department, or sewer department, or whatever it might be,
That's true.
If it's a sewer line, sewer department inspects it, or.
All right, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Shunier talk, the older, 'cause he's not saying that.
You got, you got two things, two things, and you got there, and, and a conflict from each other. You know, I don't know what they call it, drain layer's license you're talking about?
Drain layer's.
Drain, drain layer's license.
Yep.
In Southridge, there's probably ten people on that list, as of two thousand twenty-two. I believe that's one of the things you talked about, is pulling those people's licenses. But Joe Ball that comes in from Boston, or comes in from Sutton, or something like that, they don't have that license. These guys are like pre-vented, uh, you, you know, venting them out ahead of time when it was on that list, maybe.
Right.
But the guy coming in from, from Sutton or Boston, they don't have that drain layer's license.
They sure, they're gonna get it.
They still have to get a permit.
Do a thing.
They still have to get permits, yeah.
So they pull a permit.
Yeah.
So instead of pulling the license, you're gonna tie the fee violation to the permit.
Absolutely.
So the drain layer doesn't lose his license, he loses the permit that he opened up to.
Right.
Otherwise, you're only picking on those ten or twelve people that are on the drain layer, uh, the drain layer's license.
That's wrong, that's wrong, George.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the guy who comes in from Boston or wherever to do it, he has to apply for a drain layer's license with Southridge, so he can do the job.
In a town, right.
But it don't require, the town doesn't require them to do that.
Yes, yes, so, so for example, the guy on Charlton Street have to apply for the drain layer's license and show all his paperwork that says he's qualified to go and pay for it.
Okay, so, so how do we draw the list?
So he does have, so.
Right.
So the list that you saw, say for this Charlton Street one that we keep discussing, 'cause that's the most recent one, if you go into the office now and ask for a list, that gentleman's name will be there. He applied for it after that list came out, he applied for it just for that job on Charlton Street to do it.
Mm-hmm.
He is on the list, I do have to pay for it.
Matt did say that not all the contractors that do work in Southridge do not all go on a drain layer's license.
So that's, that may be, that's, that may itself is a problem.
Yes, because if the work that I pulled would not happen, this gentleman did apply for it and had his drain layer's license, 'cause I did see it too.
If we don't know who's doing the work, we should.
My suggestion would be, instead of pulling the license, your first, you know, your violation, pull the permit. It still gives that person the ability to work in town, but to get his game in order. So, I, that's all I'm saying, but, but, to me, the average guy looking out there, there's two separate things you're looking at. And when you hear from the DPW directors say that not everybody in town is required to have that drain layer's license, NUCO don't do it. He, he listed, he, he listed a bunch of them that don't do it.
NUCO is the one.
And it's not enforced.
Right.
Well, that, that is one of the things that I, I caught when I was reading the permit too, we need to find the difference between license and permit.
Right, NUCO was the one.
Right.
Yeah, that is true. And that is an issue.
Okay, um, Cory, on his hand up?
Yeah, just on the, uh, the fees, uh, usually that's in the contractual agreement between the subcontractor or the, uh, contractor and the town, so those, those reimbursements may be in the actual contractual agreement on the utility. And as far as the inspection being about half an hour, I don't know, uh, you might wanna look into this, but you better remember you're on the union side of the house with that. DPW workers themselves, and the inspector would be on non-union side of the house, so that's something that could very simply be addressed
Okay.
within the department itself.
That's a good point.
All right, thank you.
That's a good point.
All right, and then the last thing I have here, and, and, I'll, I'll take a look at adding cost for repair. Uh, we'll take a look at, we'll take a look at the hours or addressing that issue with the inspector, uh, after hour costs. And I'll look at a drain layer's license, if that can be added to the application.
Right.
I think it's in here, but.
I thought it was.
I think it's pretty.
Yeah, somebody, somebody in there.
It's already in the previous one.
So, all right. The last thing I put down here, that we did not talk about, and I, it may even be in here, I'm not sure, but a moratorium, excavation will not be allowed through right of ways that have been newly surfaced or resurfaced for a period of five years.
I think there is something, there is something in place right now, yeah.
I think it's ten years.
Ten years?
I think it's ten years.
Okay, so it is in here?
I thought it was five years.
Did you?
I wanna say I thought it was ten, but I could be wrong.
And you think it is in here?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in here.
I thought there was something.
There was some, I don't know how many, I, I'm not correct on what it is, but there is, uh, at least five years.
All right, I'll take a look at that then, as well.
I mean, I think five's a fair, I'm not ten, it's not excessive, it's like, an excessive.
Yeah, I think that's what it is, yeah.
Five year moratorium, work well for Alphamain Street.
I look, I look, I see.
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be ripping it up next year.
I saw, I saw that there on High Street after, they already paved it, they already.
They're on Main Street, they just made, ripped up Main Street at Felix.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not even a year later, they ripped it up. That was curious.
And we, we, we were trying to tell them, we wanted them to repave it all the way up to Felix anyway, and yet they're ripping it up again, and they won't, they're not willing to repave it beyond, what was it, co- common terms?
Yeah.
But they're opening it again anyway.
Because one company is, one company is NUCO.
Yep, they're the worst.
Go ahead, Cory.
Do you have a description on your moratorium, on rules and regulations regarding the moratorium?
Do I have what?
No.
Is there any kind of description with your five year moratorium that would specifically state that they would be responsible for all fees incorporated with repaving of the road?
No, I, I didn't, that's, that's kind of bad right there, yeah.
Just on that right of the line.
I would look into that, because most moratoriums are, uh, they would have something to do with that. And moratoriums would be null and void if it's an emergency situation.
Right.
Obviously, hence the reason they have the moratorium. Uh, and usually in emergency situations, they would be required to do like a, um, infrared patch, where they would bring in a machine that actually infrared melts the asphalt, uh, to flush surface with existing. So basically, you would never know there was a patch there, um, and I would look into having that required if, under emergency circumstances, that that would be part of the, uh, putback essentially.
All right.
So there's, I would open up some books in other towns and see if there's a, uh, um, more specific specs on what they would have to follow.
Moratorium.
That makes sense.
Yep, that's good, I like it. And that's all I have, so go ahead.
That would be thanks, okay, I had, took a whole bunch of notes on this, um, I was thinking, um, you said, you said it number thirteen, and I ca- I saw that too. Um, I would also say that, that as far as the way, nu- number thirteen is phrased, we should, we need to change it from may result to shall result. Um, 'cause may allows us, that allows them to, if they're friend, if, if they're friendly, they don't do it, so, no, you, you'll lose it.
Two variables.
Um, and let's see here, I would also add, under number fifteen, I had noted, I, I would add something there saying, this section shall apply to any single trench or series of trenches in the same street by the same contractor that combined to a hun- maybe, that may be adding that combined one hundred feet or more. Um, and that they, and that, that's the, that's the line, that's about pavement repair, okay, it's less than, success of a hundred, just to clarify that, so that if they're doing little bits and pieces like an Everett Street, over the course of time, it should be covered, they should be required to do it all.
There's a gray area there.
To, to at least eight feet widths.
It's a gray area Matt said there, which we need to discuss. Because Matt said, and what's the street was the example that he used, and I kinda, I was the one who was a stickler for this, but after he explained it, I kinda agree with him. They do their lateral the whole length of Worcester Street on one side of the road, and you're saying that hundred foot,
Right. Right.
if you're within that fifty feet or that hundred foot marker, and they start doing the laterals like this.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So we're thinking, from here to here, was it, is within that fifty feet, they should have to pave that whole thing?
That's what I think.
Well, that's what I think too, and that's how I looked at it, but the way Matt explained it to us the last meeting that I was here, their job, this was one whole job, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah, I can understand that, and it is, but they still should be required to pave it all, because, because the way they're trenching is it screws up the street.
It's one job. I agree. Nope, I agree with you on that, and I looked at it the way you did with these laterals, but in order for us to protect ourselves as a town, they could come back, lawyers and stuff, saying, no, that was one whole job. Even though we had those laterals going off, where the laterals were within the fifty feet, we still had our main trench, that was part of the whole job too, so it, it, that hundred square foot area, whatever, that's all one job, so I think there needs to be more clarification. We're all on the same page that
That's why I.
from this lateral to the third or fourth or fifth lateral should all be one, but if you include that main line going down, legally, there might be a problem with that.
Well, that's why I'm saying that this section shall apply to any single trench or series of trenches in the same street by the same contractor.
And where are you on this?
That would cover, this is, this, this was, I initially did number fifteen.
That's on fifteen.
Matt said it's fifty feet between each trench, you know, no matter, Matt line going down, it's fifty feet within each trench.
I see.
Yeah, I'm adding that.
Which, which is, you're getting enforced, because there was only a couple of them that were within that fifty feet, and we didn't want to have.
And besides.
Make sure they enforce it, though.
And I would also, maybe, maybe we could.
Now working.
Hold on, one at a time.
Maybe we can also add something, 'cause in some streets, if you notice, some street, it's not on one side, sometimes it's quit, across, crisscrosses the street kind of this way. It does this weird stuff in the middle, so by, by the time you get to one end of the street, it's on one side of the street, and goes to the other side.
Yeah. I agree.
They completely, they completely screwed the street.
Southwood, Southwood like that.
But it's all, yeah, but it's all one trench, but it should be, they should be repairing the entire street.
Oh, I agree.
Because they've done this to the street.
And, and to follow what you're saying, Gus, I agree a hundred percent, and the only thing that gets me is this, I think we should look at where that, and I've heard it numerous times, I've heard it twice tonight already, that eight foot width. Well, when you get into a secondary road or a third road, where the road is only ten feet wide between north and south mountain lands, and they're gonna do eight feet, and there's another two feet left, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, they should have to do from center line to curb. I mean, to do that extra two feet, you're leaving us with a seam two feet off that curb where
That makes sense.
that's where your water's gonna get in, it's gonna freeze, it's gonna blow the road out, in my opinion, we should and, and, I don't wanna keep picking on NUCO, but it's mainly them, they should have to do from center line to curb. I mean, if you're gonna beat the road up that bad, do the extra two feet.
I, I agree with that, absolutely.
All right, before you continue, I'm gonna let Cory say something.
Yeah, just, just food for thought when you guys are contemplating all this stuff, uh, most times with a, with a, let's use a gas job, um, that one trench that may be the length of Everett Street, let's say from end to end, um, Gus, like you said, they switch lanes.
Yeah.
There's usually reasons behind that, structures in the roadway.
No, I do have.
They try to do, like, eighty percent of the services will be on one side of the road, so that's usually the side they run the main on, so most of your excavation is on one lane.
Right.
Um, most times those, those mains are put in, there's a contractual agreement again on how the paving would be done with town or state or whatever, uh, and the, the contractor, and usually the contractor, National Grid, EverSource, whatever it may be, would have the subcontractor come in and do the paving. The subcontractor doing the job for the contractor, NUCO doing it for the gas company. Usually they would, um, on trenches or service laterals or, uh, man bell holes or whatever it may be, uh, are required to do a one foot cutback prior to paving.
Right.
So if they open a five by five hole, they have to cut back a six by six hole for paving. And then, any undermined material, uh, would not be included in that, so if there was undermined material that was two feet back, they would have to cut three feet back.
Right.
And the reason behind that would be, when the paving actually happens, the contractual agreement usually has to do with a two foot either side, uh, mill and pave.
Right.
So that they would be milling up the temporary asphalt that we would put back.
Right.
And they would have a one foot overlap with the new asphalt.
Right, and they're supposed to do it already, but they don't do it.
And it's not always eight foot. Correct, but it's not always an eight foot overlay, uh, because you're talking hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in regards to, let's say one town, in regards to all the jobs going on.
Sure.
Gas company can't put that out, or won't put that out. So, I understand the wants, I would agree a hundred percent on what should be done. Unfortunately, reality would not be a full curb to curb or a even center line to curb, depending on contractual agreement, so you gotta remember what that contract reads from. So you've gotta remember what that contract reads from us to them or them to us, however we we look at it. And EverSource isn't gonna move out, National Grid's not gonna move out, this is the only, you know, they're the only suppliers in the area.
Right, I see.
So we have to, you have to work with them.
Right.
So it's a super shitty line to have to deal with and kinda, you know, it's crazy, but just kinda remember all that stuff and
Mm-hmm.
maybe even get some contracts from prior.
Right, that makes sense.
And look at some of the contracts with National Grid or whoa, who matter, doesn't even matter, and read some of the verbiage in there regards to what the paving was. And then even check some of the moratorium stuff that's in there, uh or damages that may happen if it's town reimbursable. Try to check those and see if it's in there, because that's something that that may wanna be added into those contracts prior to uh signing of them.
All right.
Sorry, long winded.
No, no problem.
That's a good point.
Is there anything else? Council, okay?
Oh, I've got a lot on the system. Um under number eighteen, I was thinking of adding phrase, first of all, changing that will result to showers all the time. Um and adding language that says, um an automatic denial of future licenses for X number of years, whatever that can be, um to all, to all revocation references. So that would be to revocation references for numbers thirteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Um one question I had is, and and maybe, I don't know if you guys can answer, cause unfortunately we don't have anybody, an official, who can answer this. Um under, under number nineteen, it says that the plan must be approved by the director and police chief in advance, but how long, how long may advance? Anybody know?
If I may, you'll, you have to do a minimum of seventy-two hours advance notice, so ask me at least a minimum of seventy-two hours, unless that's an emergency.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, so is that, is that, that's how you do advance, so it's the DPW?
That's to everybody, and Kuna, you need to notify DPW and and the old paperwork that Mike has there, you need to notify DPW and the police department, minimum seventy-two for hours.
Unless there's emergency.
Cause it, cause it says, it says, it says notification for seventy-two hours, but this says it must be approved by the director and the police chief with the stuff.
So it's a minimum of at least seventy-two.
How I'm headed, so that basically assumes that you give them a notice seventy-two, they turn, they turn over approval media. You probably won't do that.
But I know. Right, seventy-two hour notice at least gives you time, gives the town time to look at it and.
Hopefully. Oh, yeah.
Police department if they need a detail officer or not, hopefully, you kinda know what type of work they're doing if they're going into the road or not.
Totally, yeah. Mm-hmm, right. Um and on numbers twenty-three and twenty-four, I thought those phrases were very vague, what if they screwed up anyway? I mean, so all it says is care shall be exercised to protect existing underground structures, care shall be taken, the contractor shall exercise extreme care, what what does that actually mean?
Well, if he does damage to another utility, that's where his liability would kick in, or if need be, you go after his bond. But my thing is.
And that's what the inspector would call it.
Yeah, and my, the other thing is we need to consider is the bonds, our fees we charge for bonds.
Hmm. It should be higher than, it should be higher than what current charge, yeah, I agree with that.
A lot, I mean, it's a good example.
And I don't, I don't know if you caught the phrasing for number twenty-seven, it says insulation of water, it should be water and sewer.
It came on full clock.
Cory wanted to say something.
I mean, he, I I did, but John had his stand up first.
Yeah, John's, he's like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's hiding behind chairs.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
He didn't say.
Gus has got the floor, so I'll wait until Gus has done it.
Okay.
Okay, so that was twenty-seven, I just pointed out that that should be water and sewer, cause otherwise, otherwise twenty-seven is completely exempt.
What was that again?
Number, under, under item number twenty-seven, it just says insulation of water service connection, should that also be water and sewer service connection? Cause otherwise, all of that stuff is exempt for sewer.
Yeah, yep.
And it should be, and where it says southward water coming, you should say southward water or sewer as relevant.
But I think there's a whole nother set of regulations here that you include.
For sewer and water.
Yeah.
That includes.
There's a whole other section that includes sewer as well.
Right, how come they're not?
I think you're seeing the different regulations for sewer and water.
It's like. It's at the back.
Yeah, there's two separate ones for sewer and water.
But that's all right, go ahead, go, uh council. I think he only gave us water, even though.
Yeah, it looks like it, cause I don't have sewer ones. Um, yeah, I guess that's, that's all I had.
All right, now we think the sewer, if it was a sewer line, now that would be something that's being done by the town, correct? I don't know how we could enforce any fines, fees, or anything.
All right, yeah, it falls under the same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
The one on Cheltenham Street was a sewer line, falls a sewer line.
So I don't have this possibility.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
So it's the same, and I understand where Gus is coming from, should be, should say water and sewer.
I understand, Cory, I see. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh for you, um I'm just curious, are, are we gonna make regulations? Are we making reg- regulations that are two owners for the local companies to follow? I mean, I understand that Newco can can handle whatever it is we're gonna, we're gonna put out there, but I'm worried about the local companies and do they have the capability to do exactly what it is that you're asking for, that we're also asking the large companies to do?
Well, I have the same concern, and which is why I tried to keep it at a minimum here, I wasn't trying to rewrite the whole thing.
If you're covering them.
Um but I will say this, almost all communities that I'm looking at, they have all increased their liability. Uh they all have an application fee, somebody comes and does work at my house, I have to pay an application fee for the inspector to come over. Uh we need somebody to inspect these roads, that's probably the biggest thing that we need.
Yeah.
And then we need some, uh I would say we need some penalties, because otherwise, I don't see anybody getting their license yanked, I just don't see that.
Well, my, my.
It might be too much, and you might consider scaling that back a little bit.
I, I agree with what you said.
Yeah.
My concern is, is would the smaller companies in the area, the small local companies, that they just say, well, forget it, we can't do this, we're out of business?
Some have.
Because the regulations are too stringent, or too strong, or too many of them?
Well, we don't really have any inspections or penalties in our regulations right now.
Okay.
So why would they would say, I don't wanna do work in Southbridge, cause you're too strict, it's not strict at all.
Well. Okay, well, that's fine, I mean, I I don't, I I just don't wanna overreg- overregulate and push people out of business.
No, I agree.
That are locals.
Yeah.
I I'm sure that uh, you know, Newco, Newco isn't a local company, I'm worried about companies here that do the work for, for you, when you just need some work going out to a lateral or something.
All right, all right. Mr. Spleen?
If I may.
Sure.
To answer your question, I'm a small local company.
Mm-hmm.
And the insurance requirements that we have.
Uh-huh.
Right now. What he's asking for, for us to have, I need that carried even more than that. I mean, we're, we're, they're pretty down there, and the local guys that do street openings and and water and sewer repairs or new lines in this town that we use that are on that list that that George said, ten, twelve people, they've been around for a while.
Good.
You're not gonna hurt them, they, their insurance is higher than what, even that minimum hundred, three hundred you said, I mean, I have a million, three million.
Yep.
And I'm a small guy, but you're not gonna put them out of business.
Good.
I mean, if that's one thing you're worried about, I don't think you would have to worry about that.
Would you, would you add the cost to the price of the, the job?
I mean, that, that, that's minor, even that hundred, three hundred you were saying that, that's.
Well, that's a minimum.
That's, that's a minimum and standard, but I mean, you usually have your, your contractors that are on that list have over a million dollars plus coverage on that, minimum.
Right. Cory, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, is there anything regarding um requiring DigSafe, and it was in regard to the two lines that Gus said about shall take care?
It doesn't say anything about it, but.
That's what we wanna add to the, to the application.
Yeah, so if, I mean, and that's gonna cover you under shall take care, the DigSafe laws, you know, are in place for reasons of cars, uh hand digging, ninety inches above below. Left, right, up, down, doesn't matter which direction you're talking about, in the vicinity of any underground utility. Um so if they do get hit, there'll be an investigation done, and nine times out of ten, the, the guy digging is at fault. Uh very rarely does it come up to be a non, non uh, non-at-fault utility yet, it does happen occasionally, but um I I would definitely incorporate something to do with DigSafe.
Okay.
And make sure that the town receives a copy of the DigSafe, um because you need to make sure there's, there's things on there that coincide with who's doing the work. Um and I'm gonna use this for a gas company, it's effective again, uh if EverSource pulls or National Grid for Southbridge pulls a, a DigSafe for the subcontractor, subcontractor's name also has to be on that DigSafe, so we have to say, you know, uh National Grid, Newco, both of their names would have to be on there. The dates have to be uh within excavation time, so on and so forth, so that's a seven to our requirement that that would come through, through the state itself. It's a free service, so if they're not using that, they shouldn't be in a, in a, in a, you shouldn't get a permit without, without DigSafe.
It's in, it's in.
And the, the smaller companies, uh and I just, you better remember the smaller companies aren't even really authorized to do some of the work we're talking about here. Gas, uh you have to be licensed for that type of stuff, you have to have certain qualifications for that, so Kevin, I'm gonna use you for example.
That's fine.
Kevin Spleen Construction's not coming in doing a lateral for a gas service, uh you know, he has to have the OQs for it. And so much stuff that you're talking some bigger companies that would be under that umbrella, I wouldn't really worry about the stringent um stuff that you're, you're implementing or adding and changing, cause, yeah.
I'm gonna go with Steve first, he had his hand up.
We have a DigSafe number, anytime we dig in a road, I just call them up and give them my number.
Eight one one?
Yeah.
Well, you, you have your own subscriber number, correct?
There's a number, I have my own number. Right, subscriber.
Not everybody has that.
And I, and I call them and then I tell them my number, they know who it is.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what we do when we dig in the street, we have to, it's, it's, it's a good policy to do it, I mean.
Correct. It's, it's required, but a lot of homeowners are getting fined, uh fined today for not.
It's required, yeah. Yeah, they don't call.
Calling DigSafe or digging in their garden.
Yeah.
It's that.
It doesn't matter where you dig, you gotta notify them.
Correct.
Doesn't have to be in a road, can be anywhere in somebody's yard.
Yep.
You don't notice gas.
Any excavation of, of ground has to be covered with DigSafe, correct?
Correct, and it's free.
It's free.
So you'd be dumb not to, that's all I gotta say.
George, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, just to get back with John had to say about, you know, the little guy doing the job. Truthfully, I want the little job to do the job that you expect them to do, just like the big guy.
Right.
Because if you look at some of these trenches that are out there today, little six by six, four by four trenches, they're either sunk way down, or they're speed bump. So if, if they really can't do the job that the town expects them to do, then they shouldn't be doing the job. And the, the biggest thing is, is a lot of communities, when you're opening up in the street, they require ultraviolet light, uh ultraviolet.
All right.
To blend the asphalt together, they'll fit together.
When the sub-surface is, cause you blend that to infrared.
And and also, I mean to cut you off, but also, if you look at this document that the town has, a lot of the things in here, they just, they just don't do it.
Yeah.
And it's like no one's forcing them to do it.
Correct, that's the biggest problem.
That's the oversight.
When you dig a trench, and you, when you backfill, you cut it cut beyond the trench when you, when you pave it.
Right.
So I think it's, I I think it's about that much over, dig, one foot.
Put on each.
Right. But what, what happens with these companies too, that they have the one foot.
I don't think they do that, some don't do that.
The one foot is a saw cut, and then that side wall's supposed to be intact. Now, some of the side walls cave in and they'll have a foot.
Undermine.
Undermine, and all they do is fill that hole up with what's there, and that undermined area doesn't get filled the way it's supposed to. And that's where the problem comes in, because when you don't have the inspections done, even Boston Gas has inspectors that come out and check the work. Just on Everett Street the other day, by the post office, they were waiting for EverSource, I mean, the National Grid inspector to come in because there was something questionable in the ground, and they weren't filling that hole in, and they ultimately filled it, I think with flow.
Flowable fill?
Flowable fill, I think.
They're not supposed to use flowable fill, yeah, fine.
No, not necessarily, you can, but there was an issue there and they.
You can now?
In certain areas you can.
But.
Should've done that on Everett, on Dresser Street.
Right, but it was, I believe National Grid is supposed to inspect what's being done by, their standard is higher than Newco's standard. So Newco has to follow National Grid's standards. So with it, with our own inspections that aren't being done, National Grid's not gonna be here all day long, and and they're gonna come maybe once a week. Our own guy can't be there all week long either, because that's the amount of work here. But he can show up, parrot cop here, you know, throughout the day, throughout the week, and if he notices that the trenching isn't being done, filled properly, at least he can catch it sooner than what we have now.
Right.
Sure.
Because if you look at the issues we have now, it's because a lack of oversight.
And but that's what we're trying to add, we're, before they do any further work, call him up, he's gotta come and take a look at it.
Right. Right, remember, we had three hundred permits.
Now you're filling it in, you call him back, he takes a look at it.
Right, we had three hundred permits issued in this town that were not inspected.
Right.
Still not.
And still not inspected, and 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 part, I think he said, she said, one third or more of those are fast approaching the three year date that they have their bond on to repair.
Right.
So we, at almost three hundred, am I correct?
Something like that.
It's two hundred eighty-nine to be exact.
All right, uh one more comment, I think we're gonna wrap it up.
Yeah, just remember the inspection portion of this, as, as super important as it is, um you're not inspecting the products being put in the ground by any means.
No, but you gotta make sure it's packed in.
It's the town's requirements for excavation backfill, put back, etc.
Right.
So, you know.
I have seen some, I've seen some sit, uh towns though, they take core samples to make sure what you're putting back in there is going, is good material.
Oh, yes, absolutely, that's, that's, I mean, you do a simple hand compaction test, I can teach you a hand compaction test, it's gonna teach you whether you're putting back suitable backfill material. And that's something the inspector should know, um.
In your town bylaw, have what's going back in the ground, I believe your, your, your bylaw you have presently tells you what you're putting back in the ground.
Right.
It's a regulation, and that was my last thing, before we wrap this up, a lot of towns, there's only a few towns that actually have bylaws on this, most of them just have regulations.
Right.
You can write a bylaw if you want, but most of them just deal, they have regulations and that's where it's all spelled out.
The biggest thing is that, yeah, yeah. Oversight and and enforcement, right?
Right, that's right. Okay, I think we've talked, all right, thank you, all those in favor, thank you.
I'm watching you, John.
Shag it.
I'll.
Thanks, guys.